Please, please stamp in the opening. Please be seated. You have your little copies.
Keith.
Yes.
Bill.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Judy.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
John.
Here.
You got a full board.
A full board, okay. Let's get right to it, we got some stuff to do, okay? Uh, the first item of business, well, first off, there will be no alternatives already tonight. You can be in a conversation, but the alternatives are not available tonight, okay? The first item is the minutes from the July 19th public hearing. Everybody got a copy of those? Any additions, subtractions, corrections?
None.
And make a motion and we accept the minutes?
Motion.
For the public hearing?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Uh, the minutes for the July 19th ZBA regular meeting. Everybody got it, everybody got that and there you go, aye?
Yes.
Any additions, subtractions, corrections?
No.
Motion and we accept it?
Motion, Bill.
Second?
Chris.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, beautiful. Now, on a new business, uh, we have two variance requests from, uh, Oakwood Hills LLC, Pete's old house development out there, okay? The first one is a zero lot variance between 5127 Laurel Oak and 8692 Black Oak, Batavia. Okay, the zoning code, zoning code 235, attachment one, requires a eight-foot side yard. He's requesting a zero, zero lot. It's a duplex house, he wants a duplex, so requesting a, a zero.
Why?
Huh?
Why?
I don't know why. Cause he wants to sell them separate.
You, you want me to elaborate on that a little bit?
Please.
So, with, with-
We finished, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
This is Matt Manny, he's, he's the, the zoning guy from Town of Batavia.
Thanks, John. Um, so, with Oakwood Hills subdivision, um, any subdivision within the Town of Batavia goes through kind of a grand master plan for, for, uh, development and, and how it's set up. Um, through that process, it's usually dictated what type of uses are gonna go in there. Some neighborhoods might only want single-family homes, some might want multifamily homes, two-family homes, all different types of things. Um, originally when Oakwood Hills was set up, it was set up as a sub-development for single and two-family multifamily home, I shouldn't say multifamily, two-family homes. Um, I really, I really think through the process, the, the thing that has changed and why you've seen this variance come through over and over again, is really, it comes down to the market. The market for homes with a duplex is not there necessarily where somebody wants to finance and own their own piece of property. Now, with the duplex, with them connected like that, there, it's a two-family home on one parcel, but if you're gonna purchase that, you're purchasing two homes. So, the market where, everybody's right, we're, we're hurrying for housing within the Town of Batavia, so, this zero lot line basically draws that line down that parcel, or down that, that building, and allows it to be sold separately, opposed to as in a two-family home. So, that's, it's still fitting within the, the confines of the original approval, it's just because of the market, I believe, is really what's, what's driving this.
Okay, so, uh, we, we need a motion that we, uh, schedule a public hearing for, uh, September 16th, is that right? No? Yes, September 16th, for this request, the variance request. Okay, the second request is for, uh, the same area, 5139 Laurel Oak and 86, 87 Black Oak in Town of Batavia, okay, uh, attachment number one, the town code 235, attachment one requires eight-foot side yard, okay, he's requesting zero, zero, uh-
Lot line.
Lot line, okay? It's the same thing. Also, in this request, uh, a variance for front yard footage, real front footage for 5139, uh, Laurel Oak, okay, uh, attachment number one requires 75 feet of road slot footage, he is requesting 68.08. Okay, a motion that we set the, uh, public hearing for September-
I'll make that motion, John.
Mm-hmm.
Mike.
I'm stuck here.
Do you wanna do these as separate, since they're two separate parcels?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so let's take the 5127 first.
We already approved it, haven't we?
Nope.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll do the first one first, okay? Yeah, the motion that we approved that, that-
Motion maker.
By who?
Mike.
Keith, second.
Keith's second. Well, call?
Mike?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay, now, the, the second public hearing is for the same area, uh, 5139 Laurel Oak and 8687 Black Oak, Town of Batavia, town code 235, attachment one, requiring eight-foot side yard, uh, the request is for a zero lot line. Okay, he gets a duplex house, he wants to split. But also, a variance request for road slot footage at, uh, 5139 Laurel Oak, okay, requires 75 feet of road slot footage, the request is for 68.08 feet. The motion that we, uh, set the public hearing, September 16th.
Motion for the fair public hearing, sorry.
Mike, raise the motion.
Okay.
Second, Keith.
Guys, you gotta say your name when you do this.
Keith, too.
Mike?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay, I, that's all business we have for tonight, okay? But I, I invited the, the two, uh, code enforcement people, the, the code people from the Town of Batavia, tonight to explain some of the stuff that, that we're doing. Um, first off, we got some new people here that don't know. This is the zoning code, what, 235, okay? And this'll tell you everything you need to know about, fence heights, parking spaces, uh, uh, road width, all that kinda stuff, okay? Uh, unless you go online and get this, okay? And that's what, when we have the, uh, notices for, for, for a public hearing, we, we include the section that this is and, and what it entails, okay? Um, the other part of it is, this one, gonna hand it out to everybody, and Matt will explain this, uh, this attachment number one, okay, we just find that to a floor.
Absolutely.
Okay?
So, yeah, um, like John mentioned, he asked us to come in, just kinda have, uh, a discussion over the process for variances and such, just because, you know, we got some older members, we got some newer members, older isn't on the board, I'm not trying to, you know? But, um, so, and, and the way I'd like to do it is kinda just keep some open dialogue going, because we have members that are experienced with being on the board and, um, just talk about what we need to focus on, so the new members also know what, what, um, what you have at your disposal to make your decisions and the process we go through. Um, going back real quick to that subdivision question though, what I would like to do is, I'm gonna, John, I'm gonna forward you guys like a master copy of Oakwood Hills, to give you guys a better idea of how originally, cause it's been changed numerous times, and it's, it's hard to keep track of, but there's a master plan.
Matt, how many of them out there at Oakwood Hills are, um, two-family dwellings like this? Because it seems like this is like the second one that I've gone through.
Right.
Um, I'm gonna say there's probably more-
Oh, yeah, we've gone, I think before, cause how long you been secretary for the ZBA?
Two years.
Okay, so we had some even prior to that, too.
Okay.
Um, off the top of my head, I couldn't even throw a number on there.
So, this is gonna be an ongoing thing for the board to be dealing with then?
The zero lot lines are starting to wrap up.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, we're getting to the end of that, but that doesn't mean, I want you guys to have a full understanding of why they're requesting it, what the purpose is, um, but I'd like to also get you guys, I'll email Kim, if I can email it to you, and share with the board-
Yes.
Just to have that master plan, to see where they're all laid out, because there was a lot of engineering involved in it and for each lot, and what it was, what it was spec'd for full build-out, and how things changed a little bit. Um, but going back to what John was saying, really, you know, you have that, and any new members, we'll get them books, we don't have to go online or anything like that, but the, the zoning code, section 235, like John had mentioned, that's your, your nuts and bolts of what you guys have to look at. But really, I want you to not get too overburdened with it, and really focus on section 235-62. That's gonna be your primary role as a zoning board of appeals member. Just, it's maybe a three or four-page, you know, section, but that's gonna outline your meetings, how, how the public hearings go, um, what you're looking at when you receive an application. So, it kinda guides you of, if an area variance is requested, how much is severe, or how much is this fitting with the general character of the, of the neighborhood that it's being requested? So, like I said, section 235-62 is gonna be the zoning board of appeals duties, and that's really what you're gonna wanna focus on. The other form that John passed out, which is our zoning schedule A, just a general graph that shows us what all the setback requirements are for each district. You know, that's a great tool to reference and go back to, um, excuse me, but also, I wanna highlight, when these applications come in, a lot of the documents, either, you know, the, the building department prepare, or even that the county supplies to us, has a lot of that detail on there-
I was noticing.
-to help you guys not get lost in this whole book, you know, cause there's, there's stuff that only we have to deal with sometimes, um, there's stuff that just the planning board has to deal with, so don't get, you know, lost or anything like that. But, most of the pertinent information, if you have to look at a section of code, it's gonna be right on these reference sheets.
Gotcha.
I know that, I know, and I'm pretty sure, do we have, everybody's on email? Right? Okay, cool. So, that's something we gotta get better at, to make sure that everybody receives the full package of paperwork prior to the meeting, and make sure that you guys are comfortable going through it, yes. Um, that being said also, feel free to reach out to us at any point in time if you have questions, cause we wanna provide you with as much information as possible, even if it's digging out old records, like for the, um, the master plan for Oakwood Hills, we'll pull that up, so you guys get a better understanding of what's being asked for.
One, one thing is that when you send me the, the copy of the, uh, building permit or zoning permit-
Yeah.
I send that out to everybody.
Oh, okay, all right. So, yeah, and that's just, you know, we wanna make sure that we're, we're out there and giving you guys as much information as possible, so you can make a, a, a good decision on that. Um, really, you know, with a variance, if somebody, it's asking for something above what we, we allow for-
Oh, it's a very good one.
Yeah, um, it doesn't mean, you know, every particular case is individual, and that's where it's hard, you know, as much as Oakwood Hills has been before this board, we don't wanna just set precedent, and just say, you know, all of a sudden, we're gonna let everybody build right on their, their property lines. That's not what the code is intended for. The zoning code is intended to, um, kinda direct where we want certain things in our community, and as well as make sure that it's fitting within the character of that, that area.
Yes.
So, yeah, and, and that's where you guys really have to use your judgment based on if you feel it's fitting with the character of where they're asking for it versus, you know, that this is gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood, or it's gonna be, um, you know, an impact negatively on surrounding properties, correct? And that's the key component of the public hearing, you know, obviously, if we have a neighbor and we, we directly notify everybody within 500 feet of the, the project, that, by mail, that, hey, you're getting this, this application is at the town, we have an application on file, if you wanna look at it, come take a look, and then we want your feedback, cause we wanna see if it's-
Don't wanna cause tension.
Yes, and, and, and that's gonna build into your guys' decision. Um, so there's no real right or wrong with this, you know, the variance is something outside of the boundaries of what we allow, so, um, we wanna make sure that we're directing you guys, especially the new members, that where the resources are, what we have in place for you guys, and make sure that you don't have any questions when you're, when you're making your decision. Also, in these meetings, and it'll be spelled out as well in that 235-62, you don't have to, if, if you feel uncomfortable about making a decision, you're not required to make a decision right on the spot there. So, you have time to reflect on it, find out more information, so don't feel like you're backed up to a wall to say yay or nay, so, um, but yeah, section 235-62 and that zoning schedule A, anything else, we're gonna provide you outside of that, we're gonna help, you know, elaborate on what section of code it may pertain to, and then, and then get that information for you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, and, yeah, the thing that you sent me, it will say section, uh-
Yes, yep, and I brought, so this is from another town that we were doing, and I just wanted to bring it as an example, you know, these are, there's forms we gotta fill out for the county when we submit it to them, so we're gonna tell the county even, you know, what section code that we're referencing, and it's gonna be right there. Now, that's outside of your zoning schedule A, so that's gonna help you. Now, I feel, and it's just my personal opinion, but the questionnaire that is required to be filled out by the applicants for why they're requesting that variance, to me, that's the most important part, cause they're gonna, they're- If you get one, like I said, this is a different town, I just wanted to bring it, I don't really feel like that's a great explanation, and I feel like the ZBA, if you guys have further questions on this, that, that applicant should be at the meeting to answer that further, right? So, now, sometimes we get these, these are very, they're just general forms, five questions, and it's giving us a narrative of why you're requesting this variance. Things like, if, if you're in a area where you don't have, um, sanitary sewer or anything like that, you have a septic system, you have a well, things of that nature, that directly impacts where you can place the structure. So, that, those are some pretty good, now, some of them are just, uh, no one does an areaable change will be provided, I don't know, that doesn't give me much information.
That's your opinion.
But this is, to me, this is the meat and potatoes of why they're requesting it, you know? And one of the main questions is, is this self-created, right? So, if it's a self-created scenario, that kinda puts you in, in, on the, on the back burner, right? Unless you have something valid. But, um, I just want you guys to realize what, what comes with these applications, and what should be there for you guys to make a good decision.
Appreciate that, thanks. So, well, I think it was two meetings ago, this same situation came up from the same community.
Yep.
Um, we approve those.
Yes.
So, even though that's the case, and it isn't, we're just rubber stamping, because we couldn't defend theoretically why we would say no in this case, if we said yes in the previous case.
Potentially, but a, at the same point, so if there was a, if, if they're exact, the exact same applications in this case, and this is one example with, with a subdivision where, yes, this is, um, it's, it's a repetitive application that's coming in, but it was initially approved because the application itself is fitting with the character of what that development was. So, i- it's- The, the difficult part with, with it was, the Oakwood Hills subdivision couldn't go back in time and redo that original plan, and, and that's really what came down to it, and with the market changes and people wanting it, so that's one example where they were already spec'd out to have, you know, single-family homes and two-family homes, so it's still fitting within that character. Now, if we get into another situation where there's an application, but there's something different about it, absolutely-
Can you go over the one over on Colonial Boulevard? Because I know that several board members had questions regarding why there was a no vote, when there was no information that was disseminated down to the board members to make a conscientious decision as to vote yes or no.
Well, and, and that's where I'm going back to, that, that if, if, if any board member feels like they're not ready to vote, please say that in a meeting-
Or question it.
-and say, we want further information, or anything of that nature, anything of that nature, um, but everybody is entitled to how they would like to vote, you know, and I don't wanna get into anything with that, but, um, yeah, please feel comfortable-
Well, because it was residential, because it was residential at one point, commercial at another point, and I think that there was confusion amongst what it was.
Gotcha, and, and that's, that's a valid thing, because we, we have to explain this a lot of times. You have a zoning designation for an area, right? Um, Batavia, Colonial's a great area, because, right, that's been built, I don't remember when that neighborhood was put in, but it was meant to be residential, same thing with our strip going down Main Street here, it was meant to be residential. Times change, um, the master plan or the comp plan through the town says, hey, we wanna expand our, our, um, commercial area, they're gonna designate a zoning for that, but that doesn't mean that the use in that zoning district is always going to be that.
It'll be changed.
In fact, most of the time, it's not, you know, it's, it just happens to be, it's a way to direct certain residential this way, commercial this way, and, and use those arterial, arterial highways that we have. Um, so, the zoning designation is one thing, the use is another, so, and that's the hard thing, a lot of people get confused, especially with their tax bills, you know? They'll, they'll get one thing, and it'll say, I'm such and such, and you're like, no, that's not me.
No, this is residential, this isn't commercial.
So, this is, yeah, and, and the zoning code itself, like everybody hears grandfather den, uh, and it's, it's an old term, but it's, it, it is, as long as your use is what it is, and it's been before that change, you're absolutely allowed to continue on. Now, if you go to change in the future, or add something in that district, now you just have to follow what the new guidelines are. So, that is something that people get tripped over a tremendous amount of time, what the zoning district is, and what the use of the property is, yeah.
That, that's one of the reasons why I asked you two guys to come in here tonight, to explain some of this stuff, cause we got some new, new guys that, you know, don't, I was, maybe they, they're, they don't know about a lot of the things that, well, I've been here for 24, 22 years, Mike, how long you been here, 24 years?
23.
23, yeah, so-
It's gaining.
You understand, guys, okay? Uh, but, I, I could have, uh, tabled that, that Colonial Boulevard thing, okay? And, and I, I could have tabled it and talked about it more, but, um, I didn't.
I, I think the biggest thing in, in, you know, don't be afraid to speak up at the meetings and have that, that conversation, you know, if there's something you're not sure, or, you, there is no stupid questions, because you can, you can easily misinterpret what one, one person's saying, or you can easily misinterpret what an application is saying, so, there, we don't need to rush through these at all, um, and we're available all the time, so, if there's any questions in the meetings, when you get that initial application, email us, call us, whatever you wanna do, and get this information from us, or if you just, John loves stopping in, stop in the town hall, we'll sit down and go over the thing for you, just to make sure you're comfortable with it.
Oh, yeah.
But, any, any successful board's gonna have that back and forth communication as well, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Thank you.
Zoning schedule A is that nice little cheat sheet that John passed out. Any new members, and I'll check with John tomorrow, will get you your own code books, so you'll have your copy.
Thank you.
But like I said, focus on that 235-62, and that's your zoning board of appeals outline, that's what you're asked to do, what you're asked to look at, that's zoning schedule A right there.
There's continuing ad for everybody every year, too.
Yes, yes, so, and I don't know, we're hoping to board our little spiel here, might add, add some hours to you guys, I'm not sure.
No, yeah, it's helped me quite a bit, okay, to, you know, start explaining stuff and what we can do, what can't do, and all that kinda stuff, it, it helps, it helps.
Yeah, and, and, and like you said, too, so you do have continuing ad, I don't recall, I think it's like maybe four hours every other year or something?
It's four hours every year.
Oh, every year, okay.
Every year.
So-
The problem that we're coming across is there is nothing being sent out to the board members as well, and I think I've made that clear to both you and Detroit, about these guys not receiving anything, whether or not it's coming from county planning, state level, or whatever, I haven't seen anything even coming out for planning for.
Yeah, we'll start, so, what we'll start doing is, and we'll talk departmentally about getting those emails forwarded along to you guys, um, so they do have seminars from time to time, they have online things you can do. If you're available, it is nice, Batavia typically has, at the One Hotel, has a, um, they have a conference, they kinda set you up for a couple of years, I think-
The Village Camp.
Because you get like eight hours of it, and you get to pick and choose what you'd like to do and, and, and learn about.
But the, you know, the, about the Village Camp, the Village Center, you know, for the, the training, okay? It's the introduction to ZBA.
Yeah.
Okay, and I've taken that for 22 years, you know, and they, they don't, go past, you know, what, what's a variance, you know what I mean? Um, but, but a lot of the stuff now is specific to Town of Batavia.
Yeah.
But, those are good for general knowledge, but for the other stuff that, that we're doing, they're, they really don't help you at all.
No, but, you know, it's always good information, okay? Background information for you guys to help make those decisions, and 90% of the time, you guys on here are gonna transition to the planning board or town board anyway, so it's just all good information. They, they have stuff that we don't typically deal with, and I've taken some of them just to find out what they're, what it is.
The whole book.
Yeah, yeah, just to get a better understanding of it, absolutely.
I know, I took the ZBA one before I became secretary, because I knew nothing.
Yep, and I hate to say this, we, departmentally, we, we avoid trying to have meetings for you guys, because it's asking for something outside the parameters, so we try to, we try to initially find another way to achieve that, before the applicant just say, well, no, this is, I wanna apply for the variance, you know, so, cause we wanna keep within this and keep things uniform, but obviously, we have to have a, a means to go outside that every once in a while.
Yeah, that's why we're here, the zoning board of appeals, so we can-
Yeah.
View all this. But, uh, Matt, one, one thing you, you mentioned is that, like, we, we vote on this, well, we're setting a precedence, but we're not, we're voting on-
Individual.
Individual.
And that's where I'm glad, Kim, you know, like you did each one of those, even for the setting of the public hearing, you just, you wanna do them individually, because you wanna treat them all as an individual case.
Not rubber stamping like Keith referenced. Yeah, but at the same time, how do you defend, even if we're taking them one at a time? Now, these two are on, on corners, so that's unique compared to the two months ago, but there are a number of others that are two months ago, that are very similar, that are gonna come up, and if we choose to say no-
Mm-hmm.
We need to defend that reason.
Yes, absolutely.
Not necessarily.
Well, in this-
Well, our conscience.
In a case like that, and if, if the board reached out to us and said, hey, listen, and, and we'll use Oakwood Hills, just cause it's right in front of us.
Yeah.
This one, there's something wrong, we do not, we do not like it, there's something, we, we feel that this is something the board is potentially not gonna approve this, not only is our staff here, our, at that point, we would probably have the attorney involved in, in additionally helping us, cause you're correct, if you turn down an application, you, you need to have a good, a good reason, it's not just arbitrary where you say, mm, I don't like this guy, you know, we're saying no. So, yes, absolutely, if you, if you're, if there's a situation where the board gets in, in something where we believe we're gonna deny this, or something of that nature, or the town attorney needs to attend the meetings and have that discussion, or have just kind of a spiel like we're doing today, absolutely, that's all at your disposal. So, you guys aren't out here, and I don't want you to think you're just, this board's sitting here, and you show up once a month and, and say yes or no, all the, the attorneys, all our departments are at your disposal.
Wonderful.
Yes.
One, one of the-
And I would definitely recommend that, like, if we were, or even just a, a highly contentious application, absolutely, we're, we're gonna have the town attorney or legal representation in, in all-
Guide us through.
Yes, yes.
Kinda like the tractor supply attorney lied to us and said they were gonna put a very low traffic, um, building in on Route 63 there, Lewis and Earl, next to the church and tractor supply.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now that's-
Very different, yes, yes.
Believing attorneys isn't always the right thing.
Well, you, you wanna believe the one that's being paid for you.
I mean, it's, it's a right.
Yes, yeah, no, but I mean, I, you know, our town attorney's gonna obviously have the town's interests in mind, and, and that's also to help guide you guys, there's, there's times we reach out, cause we're like, oh, no, you know, someone's gonna, we, we should have some legal- someone's gonna, we, we should have some legal representation in these cases.
I'm not aware that there was a change at this tractor supply that we have approved previously. So if there's an amendment to...
What was, um, just to remind you.
I don't know, Bill?
No, when they were proposing moving the tractor supply further back from Route sixty-three, the lawyer was telling us here that they were gonna have a low-traffic, like insurance company or something that right on the corner of Route sixty-three between tractor supply.
So yes.
Now they're putting, they're.
Something different.
Wanting to put a Byron Dairy in there and, that's not really low-traffic.
No.
But.
But there's issues with that going on.
Yeah. And I'm just saying, the lawyer told us, word for word, a low-traffic business.
I would say in that case, one sec, John. In that case, yes, i- i- you guys are gonna have to filter, even an applicant that comes in here, a residential applicant, so you're gonna have to filter what you truly believe is gonna happen and that's, you know, an application versus what's approved, you're gonna hear a lot of stuff, I'm sure, yes. So you're gonna have to more or less filter and.
Filter the bullshit.
Not, not to pass the buck, but what he's talking about, like with, uh, with tractor, tractor supply.
Yeah.
Okay, they asked for two variances, the height of the fence.
Yep.
And the amount of paved parking spaces.
Correct, okay.
Okay, so that's what we deal with.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, if they wanna put a, a ice cream store in the front yard, we don't have anything to do with that, basically.
Yeah.
And not, not passing the buck, but.
All you're concerned with is our variances.
Yeah, and that's the thing, you almost gotta put the shield on, whether he's promising you the Taj Mahal next to there or something like that, we're not worried about that next to that, that parcel, we're just, yeah, focusing on that and.
I'm warming up as I go.
Yeah, yeah, it's kinda like shiny car salesman thing, you know? Promising all that stuff to kinda distract from, hey, let's, and that's the hard part because being on the zoning Board of Appeals, you kinda gotta put your blinders on to certain things and look at that two thirty-five sixty-two and say, these are our duties.
Our parameters are here, this is why.
Yeah.
But can we say, well, they're, they're, they came here as ZVA to, to the height of the fence and, and the parking spaces? Okay, now, can we, we can't make any other judgments, can we?
No, no.
I mean, that, that's what they came here for, and we allow for that, allow for this.
Yeah.
Then it goes to planning board or something, okay? And planning board can deal with that.
Correct.
But we don't, we can't do nothing about that, can we?
Nope.
The, the, you know, the, the front yard, you know, what they're gonna put the flon to the back, whatever.
You guys can put on modifications, so if you choose, so right, you have the ability to approve an application, deny an application or approve it with modifications, you know? And you'll see that a lot of times from the, the county ref- referral and, and, cause they're looking at it as a wide, wide picture.
Planning board also does it, generally it's contingent.
So in the case like, uh, let's go back to the tractor supply fence and, and they're asking for a variance, it was the height variance, right, because the church wanted more privacy, was that it?
Well, yeah.
This was the outdoor store.
Also, security, first security.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
It's, it's, it's two, two thirty-five costs for eight feet and then about a sixteen feet high.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And then, uh, the parking spaces.
Okay, yeah.
It's like home people.
The parking spaces, the paved parking spaces were, they, they cut off ten parking spaces if I remember right.
Okay.
And they're just gonna stone that because they just use it for tractor storage or whatever store.
Gotcha.
Okay, so really, the way I've been taught is those are the only two things that we can talk about.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
But that approval with modifications, keep that in mind, cause you do have the power to do that, you know? And, and that's where I'm saying, now, we couldn't go as crazy as saying, yes, we're gonna approve your variances for tractor supply, but the modification is, yes, you have something low-impact in front of you, that's reaching too far. But if it was, um, you know, we're gonna approve the security fence, which is higher than what our code says, except for the west side because that's, you know, it, it abuts residential and we don't wanna have something so commercial looking at residential. That's a modification that you can put in place as an example, but you do have that power and that ability too.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
That's the first time I've heard that. What the hell, John?
Within means, like I said, you know, you can't be like, you know, obviously, it's gotta be within means, otherwise, we're gonna be looking at having the attorney defend, why does he want, you know, and I sure twenty bucks left at his back door every day, you know, but you know what I mean?
I need coffee.
Yeah, within means, you have that power to have those modifications.
Gotcha.
I've seen it in the past, a lot of it'll play into if there is an adjacent neighbor or property owner that has a concern and that seems like a valid concern to the board, they'll put in modifications to help protect that, that neighboring property.
And they shouldn't be here as a neighboring property to.
So the public hearing is required by law, so New York State public hearing is, or I'm sorry, New York State law requires us to have a public hearing for any variance request. So it gives the opportunity for the neighboring parcel owners to give their input, you know, and it's, you wanna keep it very, um, just input-driven, not back and forth. You've seen, everybody's seen on, you know, different media outlets where meetings get out of hand, but you just wanna retain that information, okay, take that input from the neighboring property owners cause they have a better input than what I do not living there or, you know, residing or having business there. So take that in and sit on it if you want. You don't have to make those decisions on the public hearing night. Big crazy ones, I definitely recommend not doing it, you know, if you have a lot of people here. No, just take that information in, that's one step that's required by state law that we notify everybody and have a, a point where they can come in and address the board.
Historically, we've weighed neighbor opposition very heavy.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. I mean, it's, cause they're, they're gonna have a direct impact of, or they're gonna have better knowledge of, of the situation.
The hard thing if a neighbor doesn't show up, what do you do then?
Well, that's my question, so do we, are, are we then the neighbor's advocate?
No, no.
No, if, if they have a problem with it, Keith, or if they, if they like it or don't like it, they should be here.
If somebody doesn't like it, most of the time, they're gonna attend a meeting, right?
Or at least get some form of communication into you guys, whether it be written or.
Yeah, and we'll always update the board. If we get phone, even if we get phone calls of somebody just himming and hawing and, you know, questioning it, I'm gonna say, you know, in the meeting, hey, we did get a couple of calls.
Before the meetings, I call you guys up, say, we got your phone calls, we got your mail, any email.
Some people don't like to.
Always check and make sure that.
So it's up to you. Yep.
Cause the one thing I don't wanna have on me is some guys, well, as usual, I call them up and you're on the, you know?
No, I, you know, you wanna be able to give everybody a point to voice their opinion, absolutely. But I, yeah, I just, I, we wanted to make sure that, you know, communication-wise, we're all on the same page. You guys feel like you have any other further questions for any application, we're available at all times and not to get, you know, like I said, read over those four pages, just look at, it's, it's a nice little guideline of what you guys are supposed to look at and, and it tells you how each application is supposed to be processed.
Great, thanks for your time.
Absolutely.
Very much.
By any means, you guys can call us at any time, anytime. Ask Kevin, she calls us all the time.
Anybody got any other questions, any other statements, no nothing? Okay. Take, take, take the rest of the day off.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
No, don't, I wanna call him.
Go, go find out how my old friend is. I didn't know you were cousins.
Yes.
I coached with Joe, I got both them kids.
Oh, here we go, talking baseball, I guess.
No, football season, football season.
You wanna talk baseball? We'll talk baseball.
Troy, are you gonna be here?
Yeah, I'm gonna go see my friend at Oakwood.
Can you do me a favor, can you leave the door unlocked?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Spring room's already locked.
Anybody, you know, the business, take care of it, okay?
Nothing.
Oh, I thought you were pointing.
Nothing, go.
Point you did, okay. Uh, we're gonna tell you more, she's gonna be, uh, during a meeting at, uh, seven forty-two.
Second, Mike.
Need a first.
I'm sorry, I didn't make the motion.
First, first.
Second, Mike?
Yeah. No favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Closed? Nope, thank, thank you gentlemen.